Water Department specifically, but also public safety and other departments to access and manipulate in some ways our GIS data on that on in the cloud platform. So this agreement is a three-year agreement effective 10/1 of 2022 through the end of the year of 2025, 12/31. The sum of that is $25,000 annually. And we have, Bob reviewed this agreement. We did have a couple of minor changes. They made those. And we would like to have you approve those and either Vince as the council president sign or authorize me to go ahead and sign it. And we'll begin, get that back to them and start making those payments again. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion for approval of the agreement?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the customer agreement with IM GIS Group.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion concerning this agreement?
Just make one comment. I think what you meant when you said manipulate, you're talking about this company looks at our data and makes adjustments.
Yeah, if we have some errors or we find something, that'll, it'll be changed.
In a good way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes. Manipulate is a good thing in that instance, making it correct. Or if we have a new water main or sewer main that goes in or some other improvement, that can be added to that and more usable, yes. Manipulate does have a negative connotation, but that's not the case in this instance.
I have one question. I may have more, but I have one now. This is, are we currently using them now?
Yes.
Okay. It just seems odd that we, it starts in October and goes through December. Is there, was there a delay in renewing this or?
The old agreement ended in October. So what they're really doing here is they're giving us a couple of months free and getting us on a, we're not paying for the extra two months for this year. Does that make sense?
Yes.
They're charging us for, yeah.
Okay.
But we have had this for how many years, Jacob?
Since I started with the town.
So four, five years.
Okay. So they're putting it on a calendar year?
Yes. It's a little hard to make that payment. You know, we get our budgets and we felt like it'd be better on a calendar year. They were okay with that.
And you may have answered this, but does this, did this fee increase from our last agreement?
No, this is the same amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement as written, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next is ordinance 1362, approval of the 2023 budget for the civil town of Speedway. This is the first reading. Jacob?
Okay, thank you. I just, I'll first note that these budgets have been, all four budgets we're hearing tonight have been advertised on September 15th, which was required to have the, in order to move the process forward. We have to do that 10 days prior to the hearing. Just want to note that that was done. I would also mention that the public can view and subscribe to receive alerts as well on our budgets and any other budgets at www.budgetnotices.in.gov. I hear that's where, that's like one of the coolest websites out there. That's what I hear people having. But it actually is.
All the kids are going.
Everybody, all the cool kids go there. That's where everyone's hanging out.
Oh, Lord.
So it actually, it is very useful that you can go on there and kind of the first thing it asks you to do is put your address in so it knows what taxing districts you're in. And then you can see what budget notices are out there. And like I said, check a box to get alerts going forward. Put your info in and it'll tell you when things get posted, not just this year, but going forward as well. So the budget in front of you for the town tonight appropriates about $19.7 million. Of course, as usual, the majority of that's going to police and fire for public safety. That makes up 12.3 million of that total amount with another 941,000 going to the police and fire pensions, which to clarify is money we get from the state. That's kind of a pass through, but we administer those funds. 1.9 million is set aside for debt service, one and a half for roads and streets, 863,000 for parks and recreation. And then the remaining balance is going to go to storm sewer and cumulative capital development, which are funds that we have to put towards certain capital projects. We use that for sometimes one-off projects, but a lot of our IT budget is funded from that. And then just as a reminder, that doesn't include or allocate our water and sewer utilities. Those are handled separately. Budget is based on projections that we get. We get a lot of information from the state and then we also have Crow engaged with us to help kind of make sense of some of the different rules and changes and then the forecasts that we have coming in. I know that these are, I just rattled off kind of the high level numbers that we have and they're relatively large, but I just want to clarify that, you know, these are built on a lot of detailed information analysis that our department heads have come up with. And so, and I'll thank them again when they're actually here on the 10th, hopefully for the adoption meeting, but certainly appreciate everyone's help, Grant's help and all the department heads getting all this information together. Just a matter of housekeeping. So if this is approved tonight on first reading, then the budget ordinance will go to the second reading on October 10th for adoption. And I'll take any questions or you're welcome to certainly add your own comments. And again, we'll need to do a public hearing for this.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the budget on first reading as presented.
Second.
Again, a motion and a second. Go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:14. And again, if anybody is in the audience and would like to speak to the council concerning this budget, please come to the microphone. Nobody's coming, so I'm going to go ahead and close. It's 7:15. And we'll open it up to any other discussion.
Well, first, I think it's important, I say this every year we do these because this is not just something that we, you throw together and one day, we've been working on this since August, July?
June.
June? I was close. And again, that to your office and to Grant and all of our department heads and the work that they do to get to the point where we are tonight, the work needs to be, needs to be recognized and we greatly appreciate the work your office does and all, everyone I just mentioned. With that being said, we are in the middle of contract negotiations with our police and fire. You mentioned that's the bulk of our budget is, and we've had some meetings with them. I know Vince and I are going to meet with the fire soon, makes the plan. Is there, I know there's, we're still talking. Is there movement that we can make with this? If they come and ask more, I don't think they're going to ask less, but if they come and ask for more, is there room within this budget that's capable of doing that?
Well, less would certainly not be a problem. We can accommodate that very, very readily. There is a little bit of flexibility built into it with some certain aspects. You know, that, those, the costs you're referring to would be what the state classifies as personal expenses. So we do have some cushion room in there. So that exists in this budget. And then of course, if an adjustment were needed, in addition to that, we could come back and do an additional appropriation next year as well.
Thank you. And then I'd be remiss if I didn't say our library also comes and speaks to us, our school board comes and speaks to us, there's, our cable comes and speaks to us. There's different boards and commissions throughout the town that come and speak to us and the hard work. I mean, this is not just a five-minute talk that we give on these things. It's a lot of hard work that goes into it.
Yeah. And I think, thank you for saying it, David. Because I would say in the years I've been on the council, our process gets better. We become more informed, it becomes more transparent to the public. I like the idea that you provided that website so people can see that. I think that's, that's one of our goals all along has been to make it more available. And I think the state helps with that, but so we try to go a long way as well. Those meetings that we have with, with our department heads where we're reviewing their recommendations for budgets or requests for budgets are public. Not a lot of folks in the public attend those, but they're certainly welcome and just like this meeting, they're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. There's no further discussion. I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. All is in favor of ordinance 1362, approval of the 2023 budget for the civil town of Speedway, first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, next is ordinance 1363, approval of the 2023 budget for the school town of Speedway, first reading. Need a motion?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion and then have a quick comment after, make a motion that we approve the budget for the school town of Speedway as presented to us.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
I know you're going to, I know going to public hearing in a moment, but I noticed on, on this and the next item on the agenda, it refers to Speedway City School Corporation and also for the library, Speedway City Public Library. And maybe something's changed since I, since last year or whatever, but we're approving the school town of Speedway, which is something we have always done. That's been the formal name that we've always approved. Just curious whether, I mean, it's something we can change on second reading certainly, but.
I'll double check that. Typically.
And here's town.
Well, I have to submit them on behalf of the different bodies. They typically put the information in and I'm reviewing. So that's how it's been put in. I don't know if that's technically how, if that's a legal classification or how it's recognized by the state, but I will double check that to make sure that if there's any issues, it's submitted correctly.
Thank you.
That is, I believe, old nomenclature used by the state and they may still use it.
Right.
But that's been around for 30 years or more than I know of.
I think it would be important to state the numbers because this is a public hearing. Jacob, since you're our numbers guy and the expert, would you be so kind to do that for us, please?
Sure. Yes. The school's budget, the total budget that they're seeking to adopt is $29,630,318.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing then at 7:20. And those in the audience that would like to speak to this, please step forward. Feel free to come up and discuss. And seeing none, I'll go ahead and close it. Just turn 8:21.
7:21.
7:21.
Time's flying.
Minutes are running out.
And go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of ordinance 1363, approval of the 2023 budget for the school town of Speedway, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, and next is ordinance 1364, approval of the 2023 budget for the Speedway Public Library, first reading.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 1363, which our clerk treasurer will read the numbers to us here very shortly, Mr. President.
Second.
1364.
64, yes. I, yeah, I stand corrected, sorry.
Okay, I got a motion.
All these numbers, that's why.
I got a motion and a second. And at this time, I'll open up the discussion.
I will go ahead and state the budget that the library is seeking to adopt is a $1,437,660 budget.
Our chief librarian happens to be here this evening. I do have a question that maybe she could answer or we could, the, this too has Speedway City Public Library on the budget, but yet Speedway Public Library is what we're approving?
I think it's a county term. It's not our official name, but the county does that on the law.
Thank you. So if I didn't pick up on the mic.
Would you like to?
Sure, sure, please.
But they had that city, it's a county term. They have the U. We're officially the Speedway Public Library.
Thank you.
But they put that in with a lot of budget documents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Darcy, before you walk away, I told you you are going to have to talk, but it was out of my control, sorry.
All right.
Thank you.
Are we all good?
I think so. Okay.
Did you open the public?
No, I haven't done a public.
I'm going to, it's 7:24. I'm going to go ahead and open up a public hearing for the budget for the Speedway Public Library. Anybody who would like to speak additionally, please step forward. And seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close it at 7:24 and a half. And go ahead and at this point in time, we have a, a motion and a second. I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote on ordinance 1364. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next up is ordinance 1365, approval of the 2023 budget for Speedway Public Transportation. This is first reading.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 1365 on first reading this evening.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Let's all open up for any discussions.
Jacob, can you share the numbers?
Total budget for the Speedway Transportation, Public Transportation proposed for 2023 is a $546,841 budget.
Okay. Okay. At this point in time, I'm going to go ahead and open up a public hearing. It's 7:26. If anybody would like to speak to the ordinance 1365, please step forward to the microphone. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close at 7:26 and a half. So we got a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote on ordinance 1365, approval of 2023 budget for the Speedway Public Transportation, first reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 1366, an ordinance recertifying election districts for the town council. Grant?
Thank you. This is an ordinance that we have to do every 10 years after decennial census. This ordinance states that the town council districts will not change. They're the same. Those boundaries are shown in Exhibit A and they are found on our town website as well. This ordinance will become effective as of January 1, 2023, and will apply to the municipal election that will be held in 2023. The only, the comment I would make is this ordinance clarifies, and this has always been the case, all town councillors are elected at large by voters, but do reside in that district that they represent. So with that, if you have any questions, Bob or myself can answer those.
Okay, go ahead and, I have a motion for ordinance 1366.
Mr. President, I move that we approve ordinance number 1366 as explained by our town manager.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. I'll open it up for a discussion.
It's not a big deal, but we really should fix this map. There's a roundabout where there used to be the road connecting Georgetown. It needs to be fixed at some point in time.
Okay.
And also it doesn't show the area. I mean, well, there's no.
Correct.
It did matter. There's no residences there, but.
Could be.
Yeah. That where Gitgo and Burger King.
Where the town was expanded.
Yes.
And actually the cloverleaf is.
That's gone too.
Yeah. So who draws this up?
This is the same map that we've been using for a long time, so I'll have to get back to you on that one.
1926.
Doesn't fall on you or?
Well, the only comment I would have is I agree the, the boundary there to the west should be amended. I'm not sure the cloverleaf or the roundabout particularly matter, but it might be a visual cue for someone to understand, oh, I live here or, so we'll see what we can do about correcting. So if we can make note of that in the minutes, we'll.
I think it's important for the cloverleaf for one, because there's going to be senior living that's going to go in there.
Okay.
Within the next year.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think this was remarked about 10 years ago.
Okay, yeah, got it.
Should, should we table this? Mr. Clutter, is, should we table this till next meeting or are we good with it as is?
You can, but it, the exhibit is just for reference purposes only.
Okay.
If you want to table it and get a more updated map, that's fine too.
It's not going to change your boundary.
Yeah. Say we proceed.
I will update the map and I'll make sure the correct map is identified on the website and I'll also provide that to you so you know the full extent of your, of your districts.
Yep. Perfect.
All right.
Okay, if there's no further discussion on ordinance 1366, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of ratifying the election district for the town council, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, next is ordinance 13.
I don't know.
What?
Sorry.
Next is ordinance 1367, ordinance authorizing issuance of bonds for the purpose of providing funds to be applied to pay for construction of certain roads, streets, sidewalks and street skate improvements and related improvements of incidental, incidental expenses and in connecting there within the account and issuance of the bond. Grant, you want to go ahead and?
Yes, thank you. So this is a, this is commonly referred to as a general obligation bond. It is backed by the property tax rate of the town. We are taking advantage this year of an opportunity to issue, and this bond issues up to $2.5 million in debt and gives us up to three years to pay that back. I believe we will do somewhere around $2 million and probably a two-year payback. It does also issue or set about some parameters, no higher than 5% interest. We don't expect it to be really close to that. And it also identifies some projects. Now, these are not as specific as they're going to be. We still have some discussions with the council as well as with our street commissioner and the SRC looking at some projects, but we are looking at potentially doing some gateway improvements at Crawfordsville Road and High School Road on the west side of the town as a gateway enhancement and improvement for traffic coming off of I-465 and points to the west. We have talked about a sign that identifies it as you're being in Speedway and this would be a bigger sign, lighted. We'll go with what's representative of our community, racing and other manufacturing related items. So that is one project. Potentially, we're using around $1 million for that. The SRC has discussed making the difference up of about $950,000 for that. The second part of the project will be various sidewalk and road improvements throughout the community, probably up till about a million dollars. We will also plan to apply for community crossing matching grant funds to potentially do those roads. We're also looking at some other infrastructure, other things that might be needed to be done at say a public park or a, an open spot. So we, we are working through those and trying to get the council various ideas so that we can agree on what projects and then announce what we are going to do. These funds will need to be spent over the next couple of years. Most likely, a majority of them will be spent next year, but some of them will carry over, I believe, until into 2024. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have. This ordinance sets up a public hearing at the October 10th council meeting. After that, if it all goes through, we would hope to be closing this bond with potentially a local placement or working with other financial institutions. Hopefully by the end of October, 1st of November, we're trying to avoid interest rate creep and increases that are expected to come later in the fall. So with that, the only other comment I would have is this is a very rare opportunity due to some large assessed value growth for us to be proactive, identify projects that need to be done, get some dollars to do those projects without increasing property tax or property tax burden on our residents. It's a very good way to fund projects that need to be done. So I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Do I have a motion for ordinance 1367?
Mr. President, I move that we approve ordinance 1367 as presented to us by our town manager.
Okay. I got a motion and a second. I'll open it up to discussion.
Not any questions, just to thank you for recognizing the opportunity and the work you and Jacob and others have done to, to push, to get details on this together.
Yeah, I think it's a great opportunity to go ahead and get some stuff done that's needed throughout the town. You know, one of those things that, well, why don't they do something about that? And while it takes money to get, to get these projects done. And thanks, Jacob, for helping out and Grant identifying those two.
I would add, as you know, the public maybe doesn't know, the amount of monies that we receive from the state for roads in our own town is so minimal that we're left to relatively smaller projects and this really will give us a big boost.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, I'll go ahead and call for a vote on ordinance 1367, ordinance authorizing the issuance of bond for the purpose of providing funds to apply for construction. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Jacob, you're up.
Yes. Claims presented to you represent those made from September 10th through September 23rd. Happy to take any questions. I would appreciate your approval.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the claims as explained to us by our clerk treasurer.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Open it up for a discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All of those in favor of the claims as presented by our town clerk treasurer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Utility adjustments, Jacob?
Adjustments are the same time period, September 10th through September 23rd. And there's just a couple of small late fee adjustments and would appreciate your approval on those as well.
Mr. President, I make a motion, we approve the utility adjustments as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Open it up for a discussion on utility adjustments? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. Alls in favor of utility adjustments as presented by our town clerk treasurer, Jacob Blaisdale, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next. Next is our town manager's report. Grant?
Yes, I have just a couple of items and I've got my phone out because I'm going to read the details of our community Public Safety Day that's coming up this Thursday, the 29th. So this Thursday, the 29th, at Leonard Park, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., the Public Safety and Service Community Day will be held. This is a gathering of our police and fire as well as other town employees to celebrate their community service and just to, in essence, throw a small party for our residents. Many things have been donated. There will be fire trucks, police cars, other trucks from other community and private utility companies. There will be community groups there, free hot dogs, and some live entertainment. So bring the family out. I think it's a good opportunity. I think I'll be dipping ice cream that night for everyone. So we'll see how it goes, hoping to have a good, good turnout.
Could you repeat the date, time, and location?
Yes, Thursday, September 29th, so in four days, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Leonard Park. The only other item that I have is if you remember a couple of months ago, I think at the end of May, 1st of June, you adopted an ordinance admitting us into the Central Indiana Regional Development Authority. I have attended two of those quarterly board meetings since that date. We have discussed, if you remember, we were kind of boxed out of the first ready grant. Our project was not funded. We have begun discussions about a potential future ready grant submission. I know that we need to identify a couple of projects. The project that was identified previously was the Georgetown Road Linear Park, about $5.5 million. So once again, looking at regional draws, regional attractions, can't just be a local project, really has to be something stretching beyond just Speedway, but drawing folks in. And IMS draws a lot of people. So we'll, once that becomes gets closer, we will be discussing with the council what projects we might want to look at. But it's a it's a great opportunity. It's good to be a member of that organization, sitting around the table with leaders from Fishers, Beech Grove, Indianapolis, Westfield, and others. It is good to discuss and see what we can do to better the region. So that's my report this evening. Thank you.
Any questions of Grant? Hearing none, we'll move on. For the council's report, Eileen Fisher?
I have nothing this evening.
David Lindsay?
Nothing else this evening.
Councilor Gary Pedago?
Excuse me. Please donate blood if you can, blood or red blood cells or platelets. That's it.
Vice President Gary Rix?
Nothing to report, just to thank you. I know this this meeting is not easy to to oversee as president in sure.
Almost record time.
Almost record time for a budget meeting or for a budget approval meeting for sure. So thank you for that.
Thank you. My final report, I just want to, again, thank you, Grant, for putting together that appreciation lunch.
Oh, yeah.
For police and fire and also our staff. I think it's good that we recognize the hard work that they do and even in a minimal way of just getting together and having a meal together. It's a little windy that day and you were frying up the hamburgers.
I got one of my fingers got a little little toasty, but I don't think it's above a first degree burn. So I think I'm okay. The fire was there. They were they were unconcerned.
No workers comp.
Nope, nope. But it was good. Thanks, Vince, for Vince for helping out. Vince broke apart frozen hamburgers for about 45 minutes. So really appreciated that.
Big job, big job. I also want to let the public know that we had the attendance to Allison electrification and, well, a state of the art trucks. And you always wonder what goes on over at their test track. And it was nice to see that in action. And they were several other major corporations that had displays there in Cummins. And this was in coordination of an event that took place downtown. And at the time, Allison generously let them set up shop on on their property and the test track just to show their members what can be done from electrification. I think it was pretty evident that there's a long way to go on getting semis to the point where that they'll be efficient. I think it was neat to see a lot of the remote controlled vehicles that would be could go into hazardous areas and keep everybody firemen safe and support a lot of rescue operations. But it was it was good to see that we're living in a town that is still cutting edge in terms of technology and support and that they're utilizing the talent they have over at Allison's to develop additional sources of revenue as the market changes and other opportunities begin. That's all I got for the night. Thank you very much and appreciate everybody in attendance. So I'm going to call it over at 7:44.